Thank you. I forgot I had one of those. Big surprise, right? Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody out today to our Pinal County Supervisor Meeting. To begin with, though, if you'll be silent, your cell phones. We're going to have an invocation that will be offered by Pastor Ben Lee, a good friend of mine, from the Waters Bible Church in Santan Valley. After following him, we'll ask Supervisor Sertie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Those who wish to join, please stand.
Thank you all so much. Heavenly Father, we just come to you today. I thank you, Lord, for your peace that's going to reign in this meeting. And I thank you, Lord, for the wisdom that you give these supervisors. Lord, I thank you for the blessing that you're putting upon Pinal County. Lord, I thank you that this county is leading the way in all ways in this great state of Arizona and that we are representing, Lord, just great people. Just bless this meeting and ask all this in your precious name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me for the pledge? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll begin our Pinal County Board of Supervisor meeting dated October 2nd, 2024. To begin with, we have Supervisor Cavanaugh that'll be joining us telephonically.
Yes, Chairman. Supervisor Cavanaugh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whatever I caught on vacation is hanging on, and I'm doing you the great favor of not coming and making everybody else sick.
Okay, well, we appreciate that. Thank you. Due to a scheduling conflict with our outside counsel, our executive sessions, Agenda Items Number 16 and 17, we're going to have to, we need to go into executive session so that we can get our advice from our counsel. So can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, I move we recess the regular meeting and open executive session.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We're in executive session. We'll be back momentarily.
I move that we adjourn executive session and reconvene the regular board meeting.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And so we are out of executive session. Okay, first item, County Manager's Report. Neil Lou.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. And just wanted to let the public know that next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, is the County Supervisors Association Annual Legislative Summit, for which Supervisor Miller serves as the president. Every year, all 15 counties get together to see what we agree upon as far as assisting the state legislature in legislating good public policy. And so, for example, probably four of the things that are getting proposed that we all typically generally agree upon are things like funding the justice system properly, and especially probation officers, making sure that our pension system is sustainable and effective, reforming our transportation funding for infrastructure, and having an effective deployment of broadband throughout the state. And then there's about 11 other proposals that different counties have submitted that we'll be working through together to see if we can come to some level of consensus and agreement on how we want to push those forward. So I want to thank the clerk of the board's office, Ms. Natasha Kennedy, and Ms. Kelsey Pickard, and Ms. Suzie Rousseau, as well as Ms. Mariana Reza and Ms. Tanya Martinez from my office, and from Communications and Marketing, Ms. Lisette Padula, and Ms. Stephanie Mack, who's currently in Development Services. But thank you all because they are putting this event on. It's a very productive and effective conference, and it wouldn't happen, it wouldn't be as productive and effective without them. So thank you all. Thank you, Chairman.
Is that it? Okay. Item number two, Supervisor District's Updates. Let's begin with Supervisor Cavanaugh. Are you on the phone?
Yes, sir. Nothing to update at this time.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Sure, I was going to say, I'm looking forward to the CSA Summit this next week, but I believe that Mr. Lou kind of stole that thunder. On Saturday, October 12th, there's a car show in San Manuel from 10:00 to 3:00. So if anybody's in that area, please come by, check it out. There's a lot of fun vehicles. That's it.
Okay, Supervisor Sertie?
Yeah, in the past several years, there's been a lot of problems with people just pulling off in motor homes and trying to live for the whole winter. And they've been moved out of certain areas, and some are legitimate campers. So my office is going to be working on a list of where you can legally go for some of these people. So we don't have that info yet, but we are going to be working on that because we don't want to lump everybody in together that are the abusers, but we are going to try to help to give a guide on where you can and cannot go with your motor home.
Thank you. Supervisor Miller?
I don't have anything specific. I believe there's a video of a transportation project that was partnered by the county and the city of Casa Grande out by our industrial area. And so I think I'd be ready to key that up.
Well, we're out here at the corner of Selma Highway and Thornton Road.
This was a two-lane road as long as I've been here, and I've been here for 50 years.
We were employed by the county to reconstruct a two-lane road from Selma Highway to I-8 into a four-lane road.
This is a project that started 10 years ago with a design concept report that we had done, partnered with Casa Grande.
Really highlights a great partnership that we have with the county.
And now here we are with the finished product.
To see the upgrade that's been done here is fantastic.
Part of that DCR that we did was to look at how we could target making Thornton a major arterial while incorporating all the economic development that was coming in.
It's important that people understand these things don't just happen overnight.
Thornton Road widening has been a project in the planning for over 10 years now. With Lucid coming onboard, that drove Phase 1. And then Phase 2, the county took over that part of it. They finished the widening of Thornton Road from Selma Highway all the way down to I-8.
The largest challenges were coordinating with the multiple stakeholders.
You name it, there was not an agency that probably didn't get touched. And it's not easy. There's a lot of collaboration with a lot of different organizations to make these things happen.
And then maintaining traffic. There's a lot of industrial and commuting traffic on a daily basis. So making sure that while we were working through the sequencing of the project, that we can maintain a safe and productive corridor for the traveling public.
Pinal County applied for an ESP grant through the Arizona Commerce Authority. That grant is used to help rural communities develop thoroughfares to encourage economic development.
Sometimes it's difficult for the public to see how important a project is until after it's built. Right now, we don't currently have the amount of truck traffic that is planned. But once we do have that truck traffic, you're really going to see the need for this corridor.
If I head to San Diego, I enter I-8 from Thornton Road.
The I-8 doesn't have interchanges that are really improved within Pinal County. This first one, giving us a major arterial, four lanes, a median, allowing not only the trucks to access Thornton, but also the citizens to use instead of going through Casa Grande or coming through the I-10. It's a way to alleviate traffic in other areas.
We really appreciate and enjoy the partnership that we have with Pinal County. Looking at things from a regional aspect really is important so that we impact all the residents in this area, not just for Casa Grande or Pinal County. It's a partnership that we look forward to carrying on for a long time.
We couldn't have asked for a better partnership, accommodation, understanding, forward-thinking, support in actually executing the project. It was excellent.
This is a big project for Pinal County. This is a great use of our money to focus here in Casa Grande and spend that money wisely to encourage the development over here.
So when we do spend these dollars, we do want to make sure that they benefit the entire community. When we decide to do something, we want to see a cost benefit to everybody in the community. And I believe this is a classic example.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to add on a couple of things there. The anticipation of how much traffic will be on there. I don't know how many people know, but just the Walmart, the Walmart Distribution Center, 200 trucks in every day and 200 trucks out every day. That is, as of right now. And there's still a lot more industrial growth going on there. So the need for that type of transportation infrastructure was dollars well spent. And I'm very happy that the county and the city of Casa Grande were able to collaborate on that and really produce something that is a benefit for all of us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So everybody, I don't know if you caught that or not, but Supervisor Miller is just a hair past half a century old. So...
I'm way past that.
I love you, buddy. As far as District 2 is concerned, there's several things that have taken place. One of them was, we did a video here a few weeks ago in regards to identical twins that competed in the world skating in Italy. And one of the brothers, Cade placed 13 overall, and he just missed the finals. But his older brother, Liam Kiefer, was fourth. And then, so he competed in the top 10, and he ended up taking eight. And this is world in the competition. And they're from Santan Valley, Arizona. And I'll repeat, Santan Valley, Arizona. So we've got our own Mark Spitz. And then, in addition to that, myself and the Greer family, I did a presentation to the board, as well as to the city of Florence, and asked for their support to rename the bridge that crosses over the Gila River. Just, what is that, 79? The bridge there. And it was approved on September 18th, 2024. To name the bridge, the historical name is Rusty Greer Memorial Bridge. And so I wish to express my gratitude to my board members and to the city of Florence and all those that participated and actually put letters of support for the renaming or for the naming of this particular bridge. So that, we're going to have a memorial, the Greer family are going to put up a memorial on behalf of Rusty and things of that nature. So then the last thing, we've had a town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago. We had two different times that we did it, and we've taken some video of it. Do you have that, Natasha, that we can queue that up?
This is our second night of town hall meetings here in Santan Valley. We're standing here at the CAC College Complex, and we're going to talk about different things that's going on in the county. We sent a survey out to all the residents in Santan Valley, requesting information back from them. Questions like incorporation, if they'd like to see more parks, do they like the things the way they are? And so what we're going to be doing is going over the results of those tonight, giving that information out to the public. Besides the results of the surveys, we have our economic development. We have our Public Works team, which is all the roads and infrastructure. And then we have our community development, what has to do with rezones and things of that nature. So after we give the results of the survey, then they're able to break out and go and meet with any of the individuals of those different departments. We've got a lot of feedback on, like, for instance, apartments and the rezoning of the commercial property in apartments. So this is an opportunity for people to come and talk to our staff. What's the process? How do we express our feelings in all of this? And that's what our community development is here to do. Same scenario, Public Works. They can go and talk about the roads, where they may have issues or where they're happy about it. This is an opportunity for them to give their input on how well we're doing or whether we need more improvement, and so on and so forth. The value behind this, for me as an individual that not only lives here in the Santan Valley, but I represent them on the board, it allows me to look at and decide what areas we need to emphasize to the board that we do more improvements of or lack of improvements of. So that's what this venue's all about.
Okay, and then just a shout out to all the individuals that participated in that survey and as well as the town hall meetings. Okay. Item number three, discussion approval disapproval of the Substance Misuse Prevention Month proclamation, proclaiming October 2024 as Substance Misuse Prevention Month. Is Cory here? Come on up, Cory.
Chairman Goodman and members of the board, good morning. I am Cory Wilson with Public Health. And I manage the Overdose Data Action Grant and the Overdose Fatality Review for Pinal County. In honor of Substance Misuse Prevention Month, I am here today with a proclamation that I hope the board will approve.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No? Supervisor Cavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. You want to read that for us?
Yes. Proclamation Substance Misuse Prevention Month, October 2024. Whereas substance misuse is prevalent in every community and affects all people regardless of age, socioeconomic status, gender, race, religion, or nationality. Whereas substance misuse is the excessive or improper use of alcohol, illegal drugs, over-the-counter, or prescribed medications, which may be harmful. Whereas substance misuse is never an intended outcome. Often, a one-time use of a drug can rewire the brain for addiction. Whereas nine out of 10 people who misuse drugs and/or alcohol began using substances before the age of 18. Whereas the 2022 Arizona Youth Survey identified alcohol as the most commonly used substance and found that 56% of youth did not perceive substance use as risky. Whereas two out of three adults with a mental health issue consider themselves to be recovering or in recovery. Whereas seven out of 10 adults with a substance use disorder consider themselves to be recovering or in recovery. Whereas the 2023 Pinal County Community Health Needs Assessment showed that 62% of Pinal County residents reported that a family member, friend, or themselves had experienced a substance misuse. Whereas over 2,138 non-fatal overdoses and over 600 deaths have occurred so far this year in Arizona. And Pinal County alone experienced over 243 fatal adult overdoses and 1,560 non-fatal overdoses since 2017. And whereas countywide prevention, treatment, and recovery efforts surrounding substance misuse can help our communities. Whereas, bless you, a presidential proclamation in 2011 established October as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. And Substance Misuse Prevention Month provides the opportunity to increase stigma-free outreach, education, and resources regarding the dangers of substance misuse. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Substance Misuse Prevention Month and reaffirm Pinal County's commitment to creating stigma-free education, accessible prevention, treatment, and recovery efforts for individuals, families, and children in Pinal County.
Thank you. What's that? Can we get a picture with you guys?
Yes.
And am I to understand that the National Honor Society is here for this particular? Okay. Maybe you guys can get in the picture with us? Are you okay with that?
I also have coalition members that are here also.
Okay, good. Let's get them all up.
Okay. All right, come on up, everyone.
Okay, we're going to have to go much deeper because this is too wide.
Come on in.
You're all like the same height, which doesn't do me any good. Do you mind? There we go, now I can make that one. Just reach over a little bit. You guys stay there, go back a little bit and fill in right there. Look right between here. There we go. There we go. Make sure you keep that lean so I can see you there. Oh, looks good. And big smiles. I gotta take a couple here. Three, two. Love it, except I didn't see enough smiles. Three, two. Nice, thank you.
Item number four, a discussion approval disapproval of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation, proclaiming October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm not blank, I know.
Not a problem.
I was going to say Supervisor Volkmer, but...
No, 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 sir. Pinal County Attorney Ken Volkmer, thank you, Chair, members of the board. Just real quick, I did want to address, obviously, all three of these are so vital. There's three proclamations today. They impact each and every one of us. They impact our community, the safety and the well-being of our community. Each one certainly deserves its own day of proclamation. As you're aware, the problem is we only have one other board meeting this month, and that's on October 30th. So just because of logistics, that's why all three are here. And just so everybody's here, that should not take away from any of these because each is so important and impacts each of us on an individual level. Specifically, I'm here on behalf of the Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation. We do have an event that I would encourage all of the board members, and I'm looking at you Supervisor Sertie. We're going to be in AJ at Prospectors Park. Not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, we have a DV awareness walk. It's great. We'll have a couple hundred people turn out. And it's really just as a community showing up, letting survivors know that we're here. We've got tons of partners. It's a really good event, and I can tell you it means a lot to our survivors. You know, it's very emotional for a lot of them because they see how much support they have in our community. They see others that have been through it. We're going to have some things that we're releasing throughout the week, or, excuse me, out the month. So I would encourage you to look at our social media stuff. I know our team's got some really good stories that they're sharing. And with that, I would ask that the court adopt the proclamation as written to declare October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say that the City Hall and the focal point monument in the center of town always lights itself up as purple for the whole month of October as well.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Can I get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number four as written.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. You want to read it?
I would like to, Chair, and just for everybody's edification. We get as sort of crafties as we see fit, the people that present them. So there's some sort of templates, if you will. You're going to notice mine is very stat-heavy, and that's because I'm a nerd. I love the data, but I think it really drives home how big of an issue this is in our community. So whereas domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. Whereas domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. Whereas in 1998, Congress passed Public Law 101, 112, officially designating October National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And such legislation has been passed each year since. Whereas approximately 20 people in the United States are victims of intimate partner violence every minute. Whereas nationwide, an average of three women and one man are killed by a current or former intimate partner every day. Whereas on a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner, and 72% of all murder-suicides involve an intimate partner. Whereas approximately 26% of children under the age of 18 are exposed to domestic violence in their lifetime. And 1 in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. Whereas men exposed to domestic violence as children are four times more likely than other men to perpetuate domestic violence as adults. Whereas in 2023, there were 84 domestic violence-related deaths in Arizona. Whereas in fiscal year 2023, 2024, the Pinal County Attorney's Office Victim Services Division provided 2,287 services to more than 800 victims of domestic violence. Whereas we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that we are providing accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services to victims of intimate partner violence. Whereas it is believed that up to 70% of domestic violence incidences incidents are not reported to law enforcement. And whereas it is time to stop the silence and end the violence. Now therefore be it resolved that Pinal County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists victims of intimate partner violence during Domestic Violence Awareness Month and throughout the year, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to victims of intimate partner violence so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's get a picture. Kent?
We're going to get a picture.
Good enough over just a tiny bit. There you go. Do whatever go in the back corner again. There you go. And... Looks great. Three, two. Nice. One more time. I vote for these guys. Three, two. All right, thank you.
Okay. Item number five, discussion approval disapproval of the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation, proclaiming October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Our very own Natasha Kennedy.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman and board members, the introduction of the item will be done by breast cancer survivor Raina. And also, if I would request for all the survivors to come up and stand with her as well.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Board Members. On behalf of Pinellas County employees who are breast cancer survivors, we sincerely thank you for the continued support and commitment to proclaiming October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month here in Pinellas County. It is truly, it truly means a great deal to us. It brings comfort knowing our journey is recognized and supported.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay, can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number five as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Congratulations. Wait, oh yeah, oh, I forgot about that.
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, my name is Alicia Santa Maria, and I work for the Pinellas County Recorder's Office in Apache Junction. Thank you for having us here and letting us honor those that are currently fighting and providing strength and honoring those that we've lost. By the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors proclamation, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 24, whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease and increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends annual breast cancer screening with mammograms starting at age 40. Early detection saves lives, so schedule your mammogram today, 15 minutes could save your life. And whereas many organizations continue to search for a cure through vital research and physicians, public healthcare professionals, and advocates to continue to educate our community about the awareness and innovative advancements in early detection and treatment. And whereas the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors supports breast cancer research and recognizes the trauma, and recognizes the trauma breast cancer brings, and understands the horrible disease strikes women and men, excuse me, strikes women and men with Pinellas County workforce and community. Now therefore, we, the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors, dear, dear, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and recognize all of the above and acknowledge all Pinellas County employees and citizens, survivors, strength, and ask all to join in the worthwhile cause which affirms to offer support for those courageously battling this disease, to recognize the many survivors, and to honor those lives lost to this disease. Proclaim this second day of October 2024. Thank you very much.
Can we get a, can we get a picture with you, you ladies? All right.
All right.
Do you want to scooch over one, in between, in between those two? There you go.
Here?
Yep. And, three, two, and again, because it looks so good, let's do it again, three, two, one more. There we go.
I, I'd be amiss if I didn't go off of the remarks by our county attorney. All three of these proclamations that we just did has affected me in some form or fashion. First of all, breast cancer, my mom. Second of all, domestic violence, my older sister was in an abusive situation, I had a sister-in-law as well. And then, drug abuse has been, I've got a son that dealt with that, and is still dealing with it. Successfully, I might add. But it'll always have the issues and problems, and so he's always gotta combat it. So, thank you, board members, for doing this. Item number six, Purchasing Division Report. Is Angeline? Angeline?
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. Today I have to present to you our purchasing division report for October 2nd of 2024. The board has requested to approve four contract amendments. RFP 170223 for telephone inmate, I'm sorry, inmate telephone services. RFP 170322 for inmate tablet program. RFP 170423 for inmate video visitation. And RFP 234628 for uniforms. The board is also requested to approve one competition in practicable form for a purchase of over $100,000. The report includes one purchase order change requesting approval for purchase order 252714, which is for counseling services that are used in our Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. There is one compet- I'm sorry, one cooperative purchasing agreement included in the report that is between the spending limits of $100,000 and $250,000 that we are making you aware of. And lastly, the board is requested to approve three cooperative purchasing agreement purchase orders over the amount of $250,000. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any, any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No questions.
Okay. So, we have a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the purchasing division report as, as presented.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, Consent Items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a member, a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time that the agenda item is called. So, I have, item number F has been requested by staff, Anu, has asked that we pull that. Is there any by the board member, any other items that you'd like to have pulled? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County manager? Anybody from the public? Mr. Ravelas?
Item A.
Item A. Item A? Okay. Is there any others from the public? Okay. So, with that being said, can we get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A through B, P minus item A, and item F.
Okay. We've got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. Okay, let's go to item number F. We'll just take that one right off the bat, all right, Anu?
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Board of, Board of Supervisors. My name is Anu Jane, I'm the Director of Air Quality Department. I'm here to welcome Mr. Edward Jeff Irvin as a new member of the Pinellas County Air Pollution Hearing Board. Pinellas County Air Pollution Hearing Board has been established pursuant to Arizona revised statutes to provide a mechanism for, by which citizens and permit applicants may appeal decisions made by the control officer regarding a permit approval or denial, permit revision, permit fee invoice, authorization to operate, and variance under a general permit or conditional order. Mr. Irvin has been a resident of Pinellas County for 25 years. He has worked in the power industry for 44 years and was an employee of APS, SRP, and TransCanada. In his role at, in his role at the power industry, Mr. Irvin was in charge of environmental compliance and worked with state, county, and federal regulators. With his vast knowledge of air quality regulations and experience, I'm confident that Mr. Irvin will be a great asset to the Air Pollution Hearing Board. We welcome him and thank you for willing to serve on the hearing board. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for filling the position.
Okay, item A, Mr. Ravelas.
We need to take them.
Oh, well, I guess we, we need to, right? Can I get a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item F as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? It's unanimous, here and now, it's official. And now the work begins. Yes. Oh, can we get a picture with you?
No.
Mishka's not even walking down.
Three, two, beautiful, one more of those, three, two, one, boy, you're really smiling today, I love it, three, two, thank you.
Okay. Oh, item A, Mr. Ravelas.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, on approving of the minutes, I noted that you had on another consent item correction of a Scrivener's error. And in the April or the September 4 meeting, there is an apparent Scrivener's error, error in the zoning issue that was approved in the chapter 2.10 on definitions. The error appears to be in the second paragraph of definitions where it states in the first sentence of the second paragraph, when not inconsistent with a con- with a context, words used in the present tense includes the future. Words in the singular number includes the plural, and words in the plural number includes the singular. The word structure includes the word building, and here is this, what I suspect is a Scrivener's error, and the word shall is mandatory and not directory. I think the place of the word directory, the word should be discretionary. I suspect that's a Scrivener's error.
Counsel? Help me out. Help us out.
Mr. Chairman, I would also look to Brett if he is here, but it would be my position that that was not a Scrivener's error. It is directory, shall means mandatory. In this context, they were clarifying that, so I would respectfully probably disagree. But I would defer to Brett if he has a different position because it is his department's, so whatever their intent was.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, unfortunately, I don't have that case or any of that information in front of me today, so I, I don't really have a way to, to look at it to see if it was a Scrivener's error or not. Since it was part of the staff report, as Chris says, it's likely not a Scrivener's error. It was, you know, what was provided as part of that, that item in that report. I, I suppose the solution to this would be to not approve this item this month and, and bring it back next month after we've had a chance to look at it. I would defer to Mr. Lou.
Or Natasha.
Yes, Chairman, Supervisors, that is not a part of the actual minutes. That is actually a attachment to the minutes, it's supporting documents. That information is not listed in the actual minutes. So even the agenda that was posted, we could not change that because that is a part of the actual agenda packet, not the actual minutes.
Okay.
So, I mean, if we can, I mean, if Brett wants to continue, we can continue it. But again, it would not reflect the minutes because it is not in the minutes. It's a part of supporting documents on one of the actual agenda items.
Okay. Brent? Okay, you'd like to move on, okay, okay. So, now that we've, we've heard the, the discussion part, do we have a motion moving forward? Do we have no motion?
Nope.
You wanna get it straightened out then?
I'm fine with it, I mean, I think we should move forward with it.
Okay, so I need a mo- motion to move forward.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that Community Development look into that and just get back to Ms. Ravelas and, and ensure that that was what the intent was. Just suggest that.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, okay. Okay. So, we are now, we're on number eight, so I'm gonna recess the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors and open the Pinellas County Public Health Services District. So, we have consent items, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Is there anybody from the board that would like to have any item pulled? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
No, sir, thank you.
Leo? Anybody from the public? Seeing that there's none, can we have a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve consent items A and B on the Pinellas County Public Health Services District Agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, I'll now close the Pinellas County Public Health Service District and reconvene our normal Pinellas County Board of Supervisor meeting. So we are on item number nine, Call to the Public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public, those wishing to address the Pinellas County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescusing the matter for further consideration decision at a later date. So one thing that I'd like to remind everybody as you come up, that you be respectful, give your name, full name, the general area where you live for the record, and be respectful in your remarks, if you would please. So the first item I have is Jean Stockton. Jeanie?
Good morning or afternoon, Supervisors and Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Mishka would just like to go on record that it feels like a Catholic wedding here today, and she's tired of the pictures. Okay, at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting in July on the 18th, 2024, it was stated that the county had received upwards of 200 to 300 letters in opposition to the development of PZ-032-23 and PZ-PD-007-23. In a review of the artifacts included in the Board of Supervisors meeting of September 14th, 2024, those letters do not appear to have been included in the packet. Please advise where they are and why they were not included. The Pinal County Attorney's Office sent an email stating that seven opposition letters were withdrawn. We are asking for the appropriate documentation from those individuals as the packet provided in the Pinal County Board of Supervisors meeting of September 24th, or September 4th, 2024, does not include those withdrawal letters from those individuals. In fact, Keith Bruton and Julio Lucero provided letters in support of the project, then filed letters in opposition. Both of these individuals stated that the development was going to be single-story rental properties, and they were not aware that it would include two-story apartment buildings. This is what happens when developers hold private meetings with individuals instead of holding public meetings to ensure all of the facts are presented. Rosella Cook has stated in opposition to this development from the first meeting. Her letter of opposition was turned in in November 2023, and she has signed affidavits stating that she is still in opposition. Gary Sawell signed a letter in support and later signed a letter in opposition. His letter of opposition should be the letter of record. Adam Rice filed a letter in support and then later signed a letter of opposition. His letter should also be the letter of record. I would like to have the opportunity to sit down with Pinal County to review every document with regards to supporting this project or in opposition of this project. Once a complete review has been finalized, I will be happy to work with the Johnson Ranch residents that are still adamantly opposed to this project. And a reminder, Neil Carter is having his barbecue this weekend on Magma Road. Thank you.
You went over. Mr. O'Toole?
Good morning, Chairman Goodman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Tom O'Toole. I live in Johnson Ranch, San Tan Valley. I just want to piggyback on what Jean said. I was here last month when you guys decided to vote against us. Obviously, we're disappointed. One of the reasons, and I had to report back to some of my neighbors, and they asked me, how did this go through? I don't know. Anyway, moving forward, in some of the conversations I had with people in and around Johnson Ranch, it came to my it came to my fruition that we were totally, we were not totally informed of everything. First, the attorney represented that he had three meetings with the public. He only had two. So they misrepresented that. Anyway, more importantly, in speaking with my neighbors, and then there was a gentleman who lives in Johnson Ranch. He was saying that these people, to piggyback what Jean was saying, that they are against that high-density housing, okay? And basically, so the attorney or the developer's team, what I mean by teaming the attorney and the developer, that they have letters that they want that high-density unit, and they don't. So knowing that there was a meeting that's coming today and knowing that in speaking with some of the other residents, I personally went around and spoke to some of the residents that signed those letters. Mr. Lucero, Mr. Brunden, Ms. Cook, they all do not want that. But somehow, in the Pinal County, they're saying that they do want that housing. And most importantly, Mr. Brunden and the Luceros, they were misrepresented to. I don't want to use the word lied, but I'll use the word misrepresented. They were told by that team of the attorney and the developer that there will only be single-family homes. I told them, nope, you can look at it, it's going to be, it's multi, it could be up to two stories. Okay? Now, what happened by the Walmart, they don't want that. By the people who live Solera, it was supposed to be only two stories, now there are three stories. So that's why I'm here, because I really believe that the team misrepresented, and this really should still be addressed. Like I said, we have affidavits of the people who did sign it. They do not want that high-density unit off like Hunt Highway and Johnson Ranch Boulevard. We felt that, once again, I was at the Planning Supervisor meeting in June and July, and I was here this time last month, well, whatever it was, the 4th. So we just, this still has to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. George Ellison?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, George Ellison, Gold Canyon. I heard a self-admitted leftist say that President Trump ignores the Constitution. That's not true. President Trump followed the Constitution when he was president. But the Biden-Harris regime has openly said they want to get rid of the Constitution, and they tried to eliminate our First Amendment free speech, Second Amendment right to bear arms, nuke the filibuster, illegally dissolve the Supreme Court and the Electoral College, and the leftists tried to kill Justice Kavanaugh. The same person said that President Trump is a presidential candidate who openly promoted insurrection. Not true. President Trump told his followers to protest peacefully. What if I would say that Kamala Harris is a murderer? That's a lie. But per the Democrat rules, I could keep saying that. Insurrection is a lie. Insurrection is a federal crime. Nobody on January 6th was charged with insurrection, much less convicted of it. That doesn't stop the left and their media lapdogs from their constant lying about insurrection. My leftist friends need to go to YouTube to see Nancy Pelosi admit that she's responsible for January 6th. Her own daughter's camera crew filmed her saying it that day. The Marxist Democrat Party is all about violence. The Democrats unleashed a massive crime wave against the American citizens in 2020 when they supported Antifa and BLM in their riots. Twenty blacks were murdered in BLM riots. In Minneapolis, Washington DC, Portland, the left burned down government buildings, including federal courthouses, police stations that caused billions of damages with their criminal arson spree. For January 6th, a Capitol Police officer murdered an unarmed Trump protester, Ashley Babbitt. Say her name. The January 6 protesters rot in DC jail, and then they get sentenced to five, 10, 20, 30 years in prison. The 2020 Democratic killers, arsonists, and rioters, most weren't even charged with the crime. Democrats are constantly violent. President Trump isn't trying to assassinate himself. Leftists are. At the Pennsylvania rally, a crazed leftist took eight shots in six seconds with an AR-15 and wounded the president. The second assassination attempt of Trump was at his golf course. A man named Rouch, another crazed leftist, tried to assassinate the president with an AK-47. He had a Harris-Biden bumper sticker on his van. He contributed to various Democrat candidates and causes, and he wrote a note egging on other Democrats to murder Trump if he failed. The Democrats' lust for murdering President Trump never stops. After the second assassination attempt, there was only regret by the Democrats that Rouch didn't succeed. The Democrats went back to their violent rhetoric the day of the second attempted assassination attempt. They said extinguish Trump, exterminate Trump. I would be ashamed to be a leftist who wants to imprison and kill my political opponents. And as far as President Trump goes, another assassination attempt is just a shot away, a shot away. I plead with everyone to condemn Democrat violence against President Trump and American citizens.
Thank you. John Etzenhauer, did I pronounce that right? Hey. Another, and I can see the back of your head.
Good morning.
You hold on a second. Officers, another outburst. Please escort them out, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joan Etzenhauser. I live in unincorporated Pinal County on the north side of the San Tan Mountains. Pinal County has been issuing permits for new home builds on top of earth fissures without regard to either the geotechnical integrity of the land that the homes are built on or the consequences to homeowner's safety. The county has turned a blind eye to this issue for several decades because tax revenues appear to have more value to them than their constituents' well-being. Earth fissures, dump sites, and old mining claims are a known issue on the north side of the San Tan Mountains. I know this because I moved there in 2004, purchasing a home that was built in 2001. My home was built on one of three undisclosed fissures that are on my property. I didn't realize the gravity of the situation until the following year after heavy rainfall. When I questioned Pinal County regarding, excuse me, it moved on me. When I questioned Pinal County regarding why they authorized a building permit on my property and whether I had any legal recourse, I was told that the statute of limitations had expired. I suspect there is no statute of limitations. I filed a lawsuit in 2001 in an attempt to bring it to the county's attention and hold them and the Arizona Department of Real Estate accountable for selling homes built on geotechnical defects to unsuspecting buyers. I lost the lawsuit. According to the judge that dismissed the case, I didn't have sufficient evidence for a valid claim. I contend that my case was dismissed because if the county actually admitted that it wrongly approved a building permit, the financial burden of taking responsibility for and admitting their error would be too costly for the county to absorb. If they did it for one, they'd have to do it for all, quote unquote. I've had 20 yards of concrete slurry poured into the fissures on my property to prevent rainwater runoff from flowing into them. I've spent $25,000 to pour a reinforced concrete driveway because my asphalt driveway was collapsing into the fissure. Regardless of my efforts to mitigate their growth, the fissures continue to reopen with new holes regularly appearing on my property, even without rain to accelerate the process. A recent proposal was brought to my attention to abandon the Gold Mine Mountain Estates Planned Area Development Overlay, in favor of the existing underlying general rural zoning, S-008-94. I live within 1,200 feet of the subject property. Retaining the existing PAD will require geotechnical surveillance prior to homes being built there. Returning to the general rural zoning will absolve the county of the responsibility of performing geotechnical surveillance prior to the properties being sold to developers and potential homeowners. Already, developers have indiscriminately bulldozed, backfilled, and built two homes in violation of the existing Gold Mine Mountain Estates PAD, and the county is still ignoring the problem. The county needs to stop ignoring this issue, stop issuing building permits, and put a stop to harming homebuyers, so more people don't end up like me.
Thank you, Joan. And I apologize. I thought it was John, but it's Joan, correct? Okay, Grace Patterson?
Good morning. I wouldn't be speaking this morning.
Okay, but Sylvah Centor, is she here? She, I just noticed that, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, my name is Sylvia Centos. I reside on the north side of the county line by three telephone poles in Maricopa County. I've lived in Santan Ranch's one subdivision for, we bought the land 50-plus years ago. I've lived in Queen Creek, the unincorporated Queen Creek, for 40 years. I served on numerous committees throughout the town of Queen Creek. I'm a graduate of Valley Leadership Institute Class 23, and I served on numerous committees with Supervisor Sandy Smith regarding the Santan Mountains Pride and various other community cleanups that were done through her back during her tenure. I'm here today to reiterate some of the same things Joan Etzenhauser has said. I started in 1998. This is out of respect for Herb Schuman, who passed two years ago, who was the lead scientist of the Central Arizona Project. Both he and retired state geologist Lee Allison took me aside when I got very involved in the concerns of geotechnical problems and fissures and subsidence in all of central and southern Arizona. They took me to Eloy, where there was an area where the ground has sagged, as they told me, 18 feet since the original benchmarks were started in 1955. On the north side of the Santans, back in the 1930s, the north side of the mountain was mined to create the runways at Williams, it was the Army Air Force which became Williams Air Force Base, which is now Gateway. Up as late as 2000, the year 2000, there were still material pits where the old where the old materials pit signs were up just south of Empire Boulevard, and they were Maricopa County's pits in Pinal County. Supervisor Smith had told me that the entire region has moved, they've moved the county line four times as a result of mining claims. My concern is if they mined the north side of the Santans as far back as they did, someone has owned the land, either Maricopa or Pinal County. It's still listed on the books now as Pinal County, and I am concerned that not just the site, the 100 acres that Joan was talking about, but there are numerous other pieces that I went to ADEQ and went on a federal level over dump sites, which is, there are records with the US Air Force, that are south of Hunt Highway. And those are now being, people are pulling permits and building homes on them.
Okay.
I would like to see a major effort by Pinal County to quit pushing this under the rug.
Okay, thank you. Is it Katrina West?
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisor. My name is Katrina West. I live at 8082 West Sundance Drive. I used to own a property on Dove Roost between Sossaman and Wagon Wheel. That acre had two pretty good-sized washes on it. And we sold the property because my husband could not get anybody to give him a straight answer as to what we could do with those washes. So we sold it to the next person. The next person bought it, filled in the washes, took down saguaro cactuses, then sold it to somebody else, made the property look magnificent, just as pretty and clean and even as possible, okay? Sold it to the next person, the next person built their house. No washes on it. I went and talked to them and let them know, if you ever have any issues, please let me know, because I can help you. So somebody, I need to know, how was that possible? That somebody can fill in two washes that is illegal to do, and then somebody builds a home on it? So next time we get a huge, huge rain, like when we owned it, because that street becomes a river, and water, they have water issues, what's going to happen with that? Who's going to help him? Now, he has, on the left side of his property, went ahead and built a wash that was there, but where the house is, the wash is no longer there, and the house has been built on it. Are y’all going to do geolabor testing on that? Because these people are going to wind up with a lot of issues with their homes if that stuff winds up happening, fissures opening up.
Okay, thank you. Is there any others that wish to speak to call to the public? Yes, sir.
Tom Lang, who filled out a card?
I don’t have it, but you don’t need to fill out a card. Come on up, Tom.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Thomas Lang. I don’t see to wealth for them not facing the right way, let me know. I’ve lived at 6875 West Hunt Highway since 1983. Now, behind my place is a mineral pit, which are now homes. When I first moved out there, the ground evaporation was coming out through these cracks. Every one of those cracks would be either built on or plowed under, over. This is wrong. People are building on top of this. Roads are being built on top of this. I know the county has issues with roads that have been swallowed up by fissures. So I please ask you, do not change the PAD on the north side of the mountain. It’s the only thing that can, if people want homes back there. The developers do not tell you when they sell you these homes. Everyone goes, “We don’t know.” And it just isn’t right to build a dream home against the Santans, to have it be swallowed up by septic tanks that draw the ground down to the bottom or wherever the ground goes. It is, I know it’s not up. So please reconsider on any building on the north side of the mountain. I know Queen Creek is trying hard to annex that area. I will not be a part of Queen Creek for the way they talk. So please, do not take away our POD, if that’s the right language. And if anyone can go out and actually look at the ground to see where these grounds, like the people behind me had said, once it rains, all this is going to fall. And I know they took bellyloads of dirt, truckloads, and put that on the 40 acres that are behind me to bring the grade up, because it was a mineral pit and all the garbage and everything that was underneath it is still there. It amazes me how developers, and I know the county is kind of pushed to their limits, but someone’s got to stand up and say, “No more. Stop the filling of the fissures, don’t build on top of the fissures, and, I know it’s hard to say, but don’t build on the north side of the mountains because they have changed roads. Thompson Road was changed by Sandy Smith because there was a huge fissure there.” So please, keep the PAD, if that’s the right language, and...
Thank you. Mr. Lang. Okay, is there any others? Mr. Rich?
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisor. My name is Rich Fidello. I’m the former Vice Mayor of the City of Maricopa. Just got a few little updates what’s going on in the city of Maricopa along with Coolidge. On October 19th, we are going to have the Seeds of Change. This is against abuse. It is a gala that you all are invited to. There are still tickets available. If you need to contact Tori Anderson, her phone number is (520) 560-3665, or you can go to seedsofchangegala.org, and there are tickets still available. And also, last night at the City Council meeting for Maricopa, they had a proclamation for against abuse, so we supported it. And then also, on October 19th, at Copper Sky, we are having a free concert. It’ll be a bunch of bands that play country music, and it is also going to be on November 2nd. So two free concerts going on in the city of Maricopa, so everybody’s invited, free concert. There’ll be food there and great music going on, so I want to mention that. And then on October 26th, something near and dear to my heart, we are having the Izzy Calderon Softball Tournament, the Eighth Annual Softball Tournament. Izzy is a correction officer who was in an accident on the 347 nine years ago, and who is in a vegetated state as of today, and probably will be for the rest of his life. This is why we have this softball tournament every year, to support his family. Every dollar goes to his family. That’s why we come and speak about the 347 as much as we possibly can, and it’s one of the third, it’s the third unsafest roads in the state of Arizona, and we really ask for Pinal County to help out with some funds for that. Also, last night at this Maricopa City Council meeting, we had a proclamation for dementia. We support that tremendously. We want to make sure we get the awareness out. Both of my parents passed away from dementia, one in 2015 and 2017, so I know how that is. Then also, on October 10, 11, 12, in the city of Coolidge, they will be having their Coolidge Days. So please come out and join us there for Coolidge Days on October 11th, 12th, and 13th. It’ll be a full carnival, there’ll be food, rides, and lots of great food and games there, so please come out and join them there for Coolidge Days. I’ll be there. Thank you. Have a great day. Appreciate you.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, is there anybody else from the public?
Chairman Goodman, Members of the Board, Dana Lewis, Pinal County Recorder. I’m using your call to the public as a call to the public. Even though Item BP was approved in the consent items, my poll worker manager sent me a message and asked that I please utilize the podium to request that members of the Dudleyville community who may want to serve in a volunteer role as a poll worker, please reach out directly to our offices at (520) 866-7569. It appears that we have staff there and poll workers, but we always like to have a couple extra in some of our mountainous areas. So if anybody would love to step up and be a poll worker in Dudleyville, we would love to have them. The other thing is the voter registration deadline is October 7th. For those who are not registered to vote in the upcoming election, we ask that they please get their paperwork done through Service Arizona. And if you have questions about where you need to vote on Election Day or where to vote early in person, we ask that you go to the Pinal Votes website. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. What’s that? Is there any others? Mr. Rubelis.
Roberto Rubelis, resident of Gold Canyon. First off, thank you to the board for your proclamation on breast cancer. I’m the father of two daughters who did not survive breast cancer. I’m the grandfather of a grandson who himself also carries the genetic mutation for breast cancer. So breast awareness is a call-out to both men and women. So thank you for that proclamation. It’s difficult to come up and speak respectfully when one is attacked from this podium without being named. I’m a self-admitted member of the political left of our spectrum. I’m not an extremist. I’m glad to be in company by a growing list of Republican members who have served us honorably. Jeff Flake, Rusty Bowers, the list goes on. The Republican Party itself is being subjected to attack by extremists. They are attacking the beliefs of the Pinal County Republican Party that believes that the preservation of our nation and the security of our citizens depends upon the Constitution, the laws, and the courts, and the respect for them. President Trump called for the termination of the Constitution. President Trump urged on the violent attack against our Capitol. Insurrection, according to Oxford Dictionary, is a violent uprising against an authority or government. That is what we witnessed under President Trump on January 6th of 2021. I rest my case, Mr. Chairman, and I pray that other principled believers, like the members of the proud LDS Church, will announce that they too support the truthful candidacy of Kamala Harris and Tim Walz. Thank you.
Okay, is there any others? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Bean, Pinal County, Casa Grande. Mr. Chairman, you failed to use your gavel today when you should have, according to the meeting that we held a couple weeks ago, when you said that you would no longer allow personal attacks. I lost count. I was trying to keep up with the personal attacks of that one Speaker, George. It went on and on and on, and no gavel. My outburst, pretty much disgraceful. I can’t apologize, though, but it was disgraceful. It was because you did not use the gavel. I felt horribly attacked by that speech of his. I am a good American. I support my Constitution. I was in the military. I was in combat for two years. I am proud of the work I did. Maybe I’m a killer. I guess, I guess I am a killer, because we killed in Vietnam, and I proudly probably killed about 50 people. It’s not because I’m a Democrat. In fact, I was a Republican in those days. I supported Richard Nixon for as long as I could. I finally gave up. The gavel is an important instrument that you have, and I know if you were to listen to this George’s speech again, you could count the amount of attacks personally that I felt and that Roberto felt and many other people felt. It’s uncalled for, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Any others? Come on up, sir. She yields to you.
Ralph Atchew, Eloy, Arizona. Across Arizona, the Republican Party has done a systematically poor job when it comes to public education. The GOP majority in the state legislature has kept public school funding at the nation’s rock bottom for decades. They’ve allowed privately-owned charter schools to operate without any taxpayer oversight. And when Arizona voters rejected ESA expansion by a 2-to-1 margin, these GOP lawmakers slum their arrogant noses and unethically push through a universal voucher expansion that now costs Arizona taxpayers $1 billion per year. We’re picking up the tab for wealthy families’ private schools, ski trips, dune buggies, and tuition at elite out-of-state universities. The most recent study places Arizona’s public education rating at dead last in the nation. We’re also among the leaders in classrooms without certified teachers and the poorest ratio of counselors per student body. Republican Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tom Horn, has just been caught lying about how he nearly cost public schools millions in federal funding. He turned parents against each other by promoting lies about curriculum and setting up a vigilante hotline system aimed to intimidate teachers. He’s consistently sought to weaken education opportunities for non-English-speaking students and pushed for including racist and factually inaccurate lessons provided by far-right extremist organizations. Here in Pinal County, the Casa Grande Union High School Governing Board fired Anna Battle, a black female superintendent, without cause. This travesty cost taxpayers over $300,000 in settlements, not to mention sending a very negative message to families of color. Now, this same board has two members who are displaying their partisan extremism at open public meetings. Steve Hunt and Boots Hawks continue to wear red hats with the MEGA Make Education Great Again logo. This organization supports the type of white and Christian nationalist education agenda that’s been tied to hate groups across America. Hawks and Hunt have become so rude and disruptive that the meeting videos have had to be shut off. The result is that students and their families are denied recorded recognition when their achievements are being awarded. But Hawks and Hunt don’t care about the students. Like most MAGA Republicans, their own interests and egos come first. And when it comes to public education, Arizonan voters must reject Republican neglect and extremism at this year’s ballot box. Thank you.
Any others? All.
Hi, my name is Belinda Rodriguez, and I am the Chair for the Pinal County Republican Committee for Pinal County. I am just going to say that for almost three years, I have sat in these meetings, and I have listened to Mr. Rubelis and Mr. Noel, I don’t remember your last name, but a number of individuals from the Democrat Party come up here and slam the Republican Party, President Trump, and all Republican issues. We have sat here and we listened. We did it professionally. We did not have outbursts, although we wanted to. And yet now, we have for maybe the last two meetings, an individual come up and actually fight back and give a little bit of input for the Republican Party. I feel that if you are going to stand up here and constantly attack the Republican Party, then you should be able to take it when someone gives their opinion as well. You can’t have it both ways, as is with most Democrats. They want to say what they want to say, but when we have our say, then you get all offended. So either you be quiet, and the gentleman said he felt personally attacked. Well, then the next individual got up and personally attacked all of the Republican issues, Republican Boots Hawks and some of the other individual names. So again, either sit there and take it, like we do, or don’t get up and say what you say. You can’t have it both ways. You can’t say your piece and then not allow us to have ours. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Belinda. Mr. Rett?
My name is Noel Rett from Eloy, and there’s a difference between talking about someone’s policies and personal attacks. I’ve come to present my opinions, and they’re based on fact, not on wild speculations. And I’m pretty disgusted with the former GOP, now the party of Trump, from top to bottom, that discussed comically intensified by another baseless absurd bi-weekly expose of the Democratic Party presented here today a few minutes ago. Starting at the national level, Trump advanced spreading the lie that Haitians are eating dogs and cats in Ohio, immediately debunked through all the damage was done, as death threats were levied at the Haitian community, forcing school and business closures, creating division within the state and across the nation. They don’t care whose lives they affect or ruin. Remember Georgia election workers Shea Moss and Ruby Freeman? It’s just more of the same. Next is solution to the boogeyman of rising crime, another lie, it’s falling. His solution to give police an hour of free rein over the citizenry that will put an end to crime. The Purge movie come to life, channeling his inner Putin, Orban, Xi, and his love letter pal, Yeong Un. How this man was ever in office, thank you, archaic electoral college, and as the Republican candidate again is mind-boggling. I urge the board to be proactive. Study and prepare for the ramifications for Pinal County should he, God forbid, be elected and project... His solution to give police an hour of free rein over the citizenry that will put an end to crime. The Purge movie come to life, channeling his inner Putin, Orban, Xi, and his love letter pal, Yeong Un. How this man was ever in office, thank you, archaic Electoral College, and as the Republican candidate again, is mind-boggling. I urge the board to be proactive, study and prepare for the ramifications for Pinale County should he, God forbid, be elected and Project 2025 be implemented. Closer to home, we have the Goldwater Institute suing to protect parents receiving vouchers from having to prove curriculum-related expenditures. The voucher program a fraud from the beginning overwhelmingly turned down by the voters, only to be crammed down our throats by Republicans. A program that continues to be rife with fraud as some parents continue to spend money that is not curriculum-related, and some are just banking the money as a college fund. And let's be aware of the harmful state budget cuts needed to fund this task cut for the well-off. Then there's the election. Yesterday's Dispatch ran a story on roadside campaign signs being cowardly vandalized. I can attest to that as I've repaired and replaced signs across Casa Grande for Melvin for Sheriff, Seamen's for LD 16, and Wilkie Harrington and Jordan for School Board. As I've repaired and replaced their vandalized signs, 20 of them yesterday, I've seen not one from their opponents that has been vandalized. Maybe they did that to themselves during the primary, but I don't see that happening now. I have noticed Tippel signs that proclaim Sheriff Lamb's endorsement. I wouldn't consider an endorsement from a bully, election denier, COVID mishandler, and politician with a badge to be a positive. I am concerned that based on his rhetoric, Officer Tippel will be more of the same. His refusal to debate Chief Melvin says much. Not open to debate or a long overdue audit. Status quo is not acceptable. Let's don't let the Dispatch's inexplicable decision to not host a debate or forum for the only contested county office stop that from happening. Chief Melvin stands ready to debate. The ball is in Officer Tippel's court. Let the people hear and decide. A difference between attacks-
Thank you.
-that are real and those that are not. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any others? Okay, I've got a list of items that I want to present to our and give direction to our staff. First of all, the rezoning on that particular property, if you could get with, if our attorney's office could get with Gene Stockton and Tom O'Toole, they're Johnson Ranch area, and just kind of lay that out and kind of talk that through with them, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Then in regards to the Fishers and to the other items of construction up in the Santan Mountains, this has been an issue that we've been dealing with for a long time. You know, people building, the way they're building and things of that nature. If you could get with the individuals that spoke about that, Joan Etzenhaus on the legal Fishers, and then Sylvia Santos and Grace Patterson, and then Katrina West and Tony Lang, or Tom Lang, I'd appreciate it. Now, I believe I was called out, and I'd been not by name, but by chairman. I've sat here at this bench, at this dais, for years now. At some point, I happened to sit in this position and control the meetings, but like, I'm a Republican, and I'm a member of the LDS Church. I don't always agree with Jeff Flake, and I don't always, I respect the heck out of Rusty Bowers, but I don't always agree with him. And what he did and what they're backing, Kamala Harris, is not for me at all. I'm a supporter of Donald Trump, J.D. Vance. You can shake your head all you want. It's my turn to respond back. I've had the same thing here, sit through all of this. Hey, hey, we need order here. That's what the gavel's for. We have not made a ruling as a board how we were going to function these. All we did was a work session that allowed you as a public to come here and express your feelings on how these board meetings should be ran. Now, I'm going to give direction. Let's get that, let's put the rules together, and let's talk about it. If it gives the authority to the board chairman to gavel the heck out of it and shut this thing down and have people escorted out, then let's do it. But we want to be respectful to all parties. Everybody will be able to express themselves. And quite honestly, to me, that was a personal attack to my faith, because that means multiple, in fact, I bet you the majority of my church, my faith, supports the Republican platform. Abortion is something that we don't believe in. Okay? Now, there are circumstances where abortion is something that needs to be. Okay? We can talk about that and have a debate about that later.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I would caution you to just stick to the criticism that was leveled against you regarding the use or non-use of the gavel.
Okay. So that's where we need to get really and firm this thing down, because quite honestly, there is a lot of criticism on both sides, and it's been that way for some time. And that's one of the reasons why I asked for a work session, so that we could actually fine-tune some of our rules and be able to do that. And so with that being said, I would like to move forward on that to where we have a regular, an agenda item, to where we fine-tune our rules and for the position of the chairman to be able to follow. Yeah, I'm a little bit hurt. I'm quite a bit hurt, to be honest with you, about the way the function. We're adults. We're supposed to be and should have an honest and open dialogue between us. I watched that. Be careful. I know. Okay. But we can be civil. We can be. We've seen it. We've witnessed it. We've even been a part of that. So that's all I have to say. So I will now close the public comments, and if staff could move forward on some of those directions, I'd appreciate it. Okay, number 10. This is a public hearing, discussion approval, disapproval of resolution number 2024, PZPA-01123. This is a resolution approving landlord Jason Sparks on 38-point acres, and we have, Patrick? You want to present that to us, please?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Patrick Xavier Roberts, Senior Planner, here to present cases PZPA-01123, a minor comprehensive plan amendment to revise property from major open space to moderate load density residential. PZ04523, case altering a property from GR and MHP to MHP 435, PMRVP 435, and RU 1.25, and PZPD 00624, applying a PAD standard to all these zoning districts discussed. The applicant for this property is Jason Sanks, representing Julian Riznaviano, the landowner. This is on 38.8 acres. The property is currently to the southeast of Highway 77 and Aravapa Road in Pinale County, currently in District, and this is in District 5 under Supervisor Sertie's district. This is a map showing the approximate location of the RV park. A vicinity map showing the surrounding zonings. An aerial map showing development to the east and west and Highway 77 routing through. So the proposal of this property is to rezone from GR and MHP to MHP 435, RVP 435, and RU 1.25 in this area. Part of this rezoning will propose to alter the comprehensive plan designation from major open space to moderate load density residential, allowing 1 to 3.5 dwellings per acre. And this is a site plan the applicant has provided to us. So a number of these properties of these mobile home spaces are existing since 1996. The applicant would like to expand their project and provide RV space parking as well. And this is the development plan they've indicated. You can see to the southeast, there's a designation of RU 1.25. The applicant's provided this as a means of preserving the wash area and trying to preserve some riparian habitat along the east side of the property, and proposes to bring forward some nature trails and amenities for the park occupants. So this property is currently impacted by the nearby Aravapa Wash and Aravapa Canyon to the east, and you can see the current development layout that the applicant's provided for this property. This is an image looking north on the north end of the property, south, east, and west. So this might be for consideration from the board. The submitted applications for this land use request are for approval of a non-major comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning, and a PAD amendment. If the applications are approved, the subject property will be rezoned from MHP and GR to MHP 435 PAD, RVP 435 PAD, and RU 1.25 PAD to allow the development of a combined RV and mobile home park with 74 total spaces. This proposal designates 23 mobile home spaces and 51 RV spaces, and the property has access to Highway 77, Arcadia Boulevard, VRK Boulevard, and Aravapa Road. The PAD amendment shows consideration of sensitive wildlife riparian areas in the Aravapa Creek, and provides trail amenities under the Open Space and Recreation Plan benefiting from this location. The comprehensive plan amendment maintains principles of the existing major open space designation in its proposal, targeting those riparian areas. The project has been previously approved and operating under an existing development standard via an SUP. The project has potential to attract future local development, and staff has received two questions about the project, but no comments of opposition or support from either of those At the July 18th Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 9 to 0 to recommend approval of case PZPA-01123 with no stipulations. They recommended approval of PZ04523 with one stipulation, and recommend approval of PZPD0624 with 13 stipulations. At this point, does the board have any questions of staff?
Any questions? Anybody? Supervisor Kavanaugh? I don't, okay. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to open up a public hearing, and we're going to, for all three items, right? Okay. So if you need to speak to any of the three items, 10, 11, and 12, I'm going to allow you to come up and speak at this moment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak in regards to these three items? Seeing that there's none, I'm going to-
Mr. Chairman, is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? Come on up.
Good morning, Chairman.
Oh, yeah, that's a good, yeah. Well, I'm going to close the public. Well, no, go ahead.
I was just going to do a brief introduction and just introduce myself as Jason Sanks with Lifeline Consulting, 3317 South Gilbert Road. And I'm here to, I'm happy to answer questions. Staff covered all the bases. It's a pretty, more simple request than it looks with all of these items. The comprehensive plan amendment really is a map cleanup. The mobile home park zoning's been in place since 96, so the major open space category wasn't really conforming with the zoning on the properties. We're fixing that. And the PAD overlay is simply to protect the natural area open space so that it won't be developed in the future. We have the same number of spaces as already approved. The idea is that instead of only 10 RV spots, we can have more RV spots than just the 10 already approved through SUP. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Did that help?
Yeah.
Okay. And now, anybody from the public that would like to speak in regards to these three items? Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public now, the public, oh, public hearing, and let's get a vote or a motion on each one of these items. Let's start with item number 10.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 10 as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
With no stipulations.
No stipulations?
On 10.
Okay. You have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, item number 11. Can I get a motion moving forward?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item 11 as presented with one stipulation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Ayes have it. Item number 12. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, to sound repetitive, I move that we approve item 12 as presented with 13 stipulations.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Ginanas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 13. This discussion approval, disapproval of the acceptance of the resignation of Western Pinale Justice Precinct Constable Glenn Morrison, effective September 30th, 2024. And then we're going to have a discussion of the process filling the vacancy. So Kevin, you're here. You're going to present this one?
Chairman, Members of the Board, Kevin Costello of County Attorney's Office. ARS 16230 authorizes this board to, if a county office, such as the constable you're considering here, becomes vacant, the Board of Supervisors shall appoint a person of the same political party as the person vacating the office to fill the portion of the term until the next general election. So should you accept the resignation, it would be within the purview of the board to appoint the successor until the next general election. Previously, you know, the board has taken applications, heard recommendations from people, and considered that. So you can determine the process that you want to use to reach the determination authorized by statute to appoint that successor. The requirement is that the person be the same political party as the person who has resigned.
Okay. Can we do that under one motion? I mean, as far as accepting the resignation and then maybe the process of selection?
Yes, that is how the-
The way you've got it.
-the agenda is set up. So certainly, it wouldn't be an appointment today, but it would be accepting the resignation and determining a process by which you will determine the successor.
Okay. Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How much time is left on his term?
It's got two years.
It's more than, is it two and a half?
Two and a half.
I thought there was a rule that you had to have an election if it was more than two years.
If the vacancy occurs within two years of the term. If it's two and a half, we're not there.
Okay. So it's after-
If it's less than-
If it's less than two years.
Wait, I'm sorry.
If it's more than two years, we have to have an election.
It's more than two years.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Occurs within the first two years of the term, then you have to have the special election because it's, yeah.
Oh.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I know what you're saying.
So we have to hold a special election?
Yeah, the term's not, the term's not over yet.
We don't appoint anybody. I mean, do we need to appoint somebody while, until the election?
All right, so that, Chair, Ken Valkerman, Pinale County Attorney, there's a second portion of it, and it's within two years and before the nomination papers are due. Because the nomination papers are due, it has to be on a general election, so it either have to be in 2024 or 2026. The nomination papers were due clear back in, what, I believe-
March.
-March or April. So it's after that period. This would be similar to the situation we had with then recorder, oh, gosh, before Dana, yeah, Carter Ross, thank you, where she had resigned after the period that we could have put it on this general election. So this board appointed Ms. Lewis to be a recorder for just over two years. This is the analogous situation.
Okay. It's just that two-year thing always messes me up.
It's the nomination paper. It's two years and, and within the nomination paper period, that deadline.
I'll try and remember that.
Well, hopefully, we don't see this again.
So our appointment will actually be whatever, if it comes down to it, the appointment will only be until the next election cycle, then?
Yes, till 2026. That's correct.
Okay.
And the one thing that I would push forward with this board, look, there are clients. I deal with our constables on a regular basis. Being down a body is difficult for them. Now, they've been working their tail off. They've been partnering with our Sheriff's Department to make sure that Mr. Morrison's duties have been fulfilled. There's a position that we're still fighting to get brought up. There's supposed to be essentially a floating constable that has not been finalized. So this needs to be filled, but I would implore you on behalf of my clients that you do it sooner rather than later to ensure that this need continues to be met because it is a vital role in our community. And unfortunately, when there's only five and one's down, the rest of them are having to pick up that time, that along with the Sheriff's Department. So you're going to set forward a schedule. I would suggest that you set it on relatively short terms. Don't make this a 90 or 120-day- Don't, don't make this a 90 or 120-day process if you can help it.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
You bet.
I just, I kinda thought we had that floating position filled, but we do not.
We don't.
Okay, well then, maybe sometime staff might inform me on why we don't. I don't wanna, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda, so I don't wanna really talk about it.
I, I can speak with you supervisor. We're, I actually had a long conversation this morning with my team. It's-
Okay.
Nothing that the county's done, it's, there's a bunch of other complicating factors, but I'd be happy to talk with you offline.
But this motion needs to kinda open up the application process-
Right.
For the appointment.
Accept the resignation and then move forward with the application process. Okay.
And we would suggest that perhaps you put some timeline, for example, 30 days for application or, or two weeks for application. Whatever you said is fine, you just need to make it public.
Okay. And they've gotta live in that district, correct? In that area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, geographically, yes.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any questions?
I did not. I think 30 days for the application, 30 days for responses, you know, and 30 days for background investigation. That puts us at 90 days, is that too short?
That's too far.
I think that might be too far for me.
I think, I, I think two weeks of applications and interviews, like, within 30 days and an appointment. I mean, that's kinda timeframe I'm thinking of.
Anybody else wanna add to that or add on to that?
Mr. Chairman, to Supervisor Kavanaugh's point, do they need background checks?
They don't if they run.
Yeah?
That's true.
Chair Ken Valkor, Penile County Attorney, legally, you're not required to do that. I would caution against you not doing some sort of background check because ultimately, somebody could look great on paper. You find out that they have assorted criminal past, it would do a disservice to the community, it would look bad for you. So I, I do believe it would make sense, while not legally required, it would make sense to have at least some due diligence and background.
How long does a background check take?
Yeah, exactly. How long does that take? Anybody got a clue?
If you assign it to my office, we should be able to get it done within a couple weeks.
Okay.
So you, so, Mr. Chairman?
We went two weeks?
So two weeks and then, two weeks, two weeks, so like, six weeks, you should be done.
Chair, if I could make an additional request, what I would request is if somebody's gonna submit their application, that they also submit a fingerprint application contemporaneous with it, that will expedite the process because that's one of the things that we look at.
Do we need to make that part of the, part of the motion?
Motion? I would ask that you do that.
Okay, cool.
Natasha? She's probably looking at the calendar saying we don't have an E D.
Oh, we don't have one in six weeks?
I don't. She's trying to figure it out.
Four of these and two of those.
Yes. Chair, I just wanna clarify. Madam Chair has pointed out to me, clerk, excuse me, has pointed out, typically, the fingerprint clearance is not required.
But we can.
Yes, I, I would say, and, and she said, hey, is that, are we gonna do this for everybody moving forward? I believe this is a little bit different because our constables act in a law enforcement capacity.
Yeah.
They are, you know, potentially carrying weapons, that they're gonna be assigned vehicles, they are serving subpoenas, they are empowered and imbued with a lot of authority. I believe it would be appropriate in this case, but use, it is not required and that would be new. So I, I wanna make sure the board's aware of it. There's certainly no obligation that, that be done. I think it's good practice in this.
It's safer.
It, it is safer, yes. So I, but I don't wanna mislead this board or leave this board with an impression that we, you must do it. It is not required. I'm just advising or suggesting that it is in the best interest in this type of situation because of the power you're vesting with them.
Okay. Any other questions or? If he has.
So-
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Chairman, the, the motion is gonna include that the, the applicant must submit a fingerprint card and then it's evaluated by the, submitted by the County Attorney's Office. Is that what I understand?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody clear? Do we have a motion then? Ready to do a motion?
Let me give it a shot. Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Constable Glenn Morrison and request that we open up applications for two weeks for the, the appointment of a new constable that will include a background check with a fingerprint card included and that in, two weeks after that, that we interview.
Okay. Is that clear as mud or is that good?
I just need to clarify, when is it coming back to the Board of Supervisors? When is it gonna come to the Board of Supervisors for action?
So four weeks?
Let me ask this, just, we can do the interviews and the board action could be after the interviews on a, on another agenda.
That is, that is correct. So typically, historically, what we've done is the board does the interviews, but I also have a date certain that the actual selection or selectee is agendatized for the agenda.
Right.
And we can always do it for October the 30th because that's the next board meeting, and if we're not ready, then we can just continue it.
Okay. I like it.
Okay.
October 30th, board appointment.
For the appointment, that's the date that you wanna, the dead, drop dead date is October 30th?
You won't have the background check then?
Well, with the understanding that, you know, if you don't have the sufficient background check completed, as Natasha stated, you could continue that item to the next meeting.
Okay.
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 I'll second that motion, whatever it was.
Do we, do we need to clarify?
No, Chairman, I do believe that I have it. We accept the resignation. The background check is going to be done by the County Attorney's Office with that fingerprint card required, and it's back to the board on October the 30th.
Okay. Boy, you do got it. Okay, got a motion, we got a second.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Item number 14. This is a discussion disapproval, disapproval appointing Patricia Glover to fill the Western Panal Justice of the Peace vacancy pursuant to ARS 16-23, 230A2. This appointment will be effective, will be effective until a successor is elected and takes office. Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kevin Costello from Penile County Attorney's Office. This is the state, excuse me, same statute that authorized you to take the previous action. In this instance, there is a candidate. The person that is considered for appointment is up for election to this position at the upcoming election. You don't have the two-year period to have to worry about. But this appointment would appoint Ms. Glover as the Justice of Peace, and she would serve until the successor is both elected and qualifies for office.
Mr. Chairman, just, Mr. Costello, good morning. And she's uncontested, so there's no reason to think that she would not lose.
She's on the ballot. She's on the ballot.
I suggested this a while back.
Okay. Do we have any other discussions?
No.
In regards to this, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
I support appointing Ms. Glover and have since interviewing her, but the question is, based on our discussion on the previous item, would we be required to do a background check? Now, we have a, a constable candidate and we have a judge, would this rise to the occasion of a background check even though the appointment is gonna only be for three months?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, members of the board, this board has been through the selection process for this position previously. It was not required at that time. Certainly, the statute does not require the board to make that a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion moving forward then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve item 14 as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. We have a new judge. Item number 15. This is a discussion of the board members' requests for future agenda items and our reports to be presented at an upcoming meetings. Anybody from the board that would like to see some items added?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, I, and it just may be a study session, more of an education type of agenda item, because I don't know that we have a lot that we could ever agendize to vote on. But this, the Fisher thing, I think it's an educational thing. We need to really let the public know how that works because when you go and fill out a building permit, those are questions that are actually brought up to you, and I think that the, the responsibility falls typically on the general contractor. I mean, we have maps and we have geotech information that the public is, has available to them. Whether they use it or they don't use it is not, is, is difficult, so. But I think we ought to understand, explain in a, in an open session, that process and what it, what it really means.
Okay. Okay, I, thank you. You kinda helped even codify what I was talking about, but even took it a little bit deeper, which is good.
Sure.
Did you have any? Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have any?
Yes, sir. One thing that came to mind recently, and I think we've talked about in the past, is the county's planning for a catastrophic event. We're, according to the news, inching closer to World War III, and I would like to have a tabletop exercise on how we would handle power outages, war, civil unrest. I think we may be a little late in the game at this point if something happens, but I still think we need to allocate resources to this type of planning to keep as many of our citizens alive as possible in the event of a catastrophic, catastrophic event. And the second thing, I'd like a report on employee turnover. We've recently had two department heads move on, we have vacancies in various positions around the county, and I'd like to know why is it that folks are leaving, not just department heads, but other employees, and what we're doing to capture new employees and keep the ones we have.
Yeah, that report, go ahead supervisor.
Far from it, far from it. If you don't watch it, I'll gavel you. Supervisor, Supervisor Kavanaugh, just for clarification purposes regarding your tabletop exercise, might I suggest that we ask emergency management to at least tell us what processes they would need to put in place, and if there, you know, a timing factor, you know, personnel and/or cost in order to, to be able to do such a tabletop exercise? Because I think that would probably be the first step for the board to have that information, you know, what would it entail for the tabletop exercise that, that you are envisioning and so that we can make sure that, that we have the appropriate parties, you know, engaged, if you will.
Well, we've already done all that, and, and the, the response was really, that's FEMA's problem, we don't have the time or the money and so on and so forth, but, so I think it's gotta come from the, a direction from the county supervisors to say this is, is or is not a priority for us, that we have this kind of planning in place and then, then give direction. So we can start the process again, but I think if the board makes it a priority, it should be a priority.
We, we've done those table tops in the past. I've, I've sat in on, I think, four of them over the eight years that I've been in this office, so. So we've done those extensive table tops, but, but again, it's always good to stay on top of this stuff, and so.
Yeah, so perhaps we could, we could, Chair, Mr. Chairman, you could direct staff to call up and see if any changes need to be made.
Okay. Yeah, so, and probably the best place to start with what you were recommending was with our emergency group, correct? Okay. Yeah, maybe you could, yeah, get going on that then. Thank you. Okay. Before we close this, can we make it part of the meeting even though it's not on the agenda?
It's on the agenda.
Oh. That's good. We'd like to swear in our new judge if that's, if she would like to do that. You would, right?
Of course.
All right. We can witness that.
Chairman, if we can just take a short recess while I prepare all the documents?
Okay. So, just a short recess and then we'll take a picture with you if you're okay with that?
Perfect.
That'd be good. Hey, did, where's Kevin, is he around? Our new judge? And so if we could go through with that. Natasha, would you take care of that, please?
Do you want to come and sit back down?
Yeah, please. You know, show some respect. Is there a role we have to sit in these chairs?
I guess we could get a diaphragm.
Is that what he was talking about earlier? Are we live?
Yes, we are, Chairman. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Patricia Glover.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution-
And laws.
And laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith.
In allegiance to the same-
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
In and partially-
In and partially.
Discharge the duties of-
Discharge the duties of-
The Office of Western Panal Justice of the Peace Precinct Four.
The Office of the Western Panal Justice-
Of the peace.
Of the peace precinct four.
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity and thank, thank you for entrusting me with this position. I'm very honored to jump into this role and excited to take on the responsibilities.
Thanks, great. Can we get a picture with you?
Sure.
And your husband?
Yeah.
Looks like even Sean might wanna get in there.
Yeah.
Come on, come on. I'm dressed up.
Yeah. It's a work day, I gotta go back. It's a work day, I gotta go back.
We ready? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.